Gentlemen, good afternoon. It is my honor to call the Tallahassee City Commission Meeting to order. It is 3:06 in the afternoon on Wednesday, January 15th. Providing the invocation today, it is my honor to introduce Dr. Judy Mandrell of Life Changers Church of God in Christ, who's going to be providing our invocation. Pastor Mandrell, thank you for joining us. Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll please rise.
Let us pray. God, we thank you now for your goodness, your mercy. We thank you for how you have kept us from danger, seen and unseen. You healed, you delivered, and you set us free. Now, we come and we lift this commission meeting up before you. We ask you to have your way. We come against everything that's not like you. We come against any division, discord, that move in this place for the sake of your people. We thank you, and we even lift up California and Vegas and those various places. God, you have blessed us, but we pray for every family who has lost a loved one, who has lost their homes, who have lost their belongings. We pray for those who are here, who sit, and we ask you for your healing virtue. Have your way in this place. This is a great city. We pray for our leaders, God, that they will lead us in peace and the righteousness of you. We pray healing and help for this great city. Thank you for where you brought us thus far. And God, we ask you to have your way in this meeting. Have your way. Let peace abide. You can control the atmosphere in this place, and we ask you to do it. In the name of the God we pray and believe. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you will join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we've had a very successful strategic planning retreat earlier today. I want to compliment staff and, once again, strategic innovations for a fine job with their presentations and all the work that they did today as well. We have a regularly scheduled City Commission meeting, and we have a public hearing at 6:00. So colleagues, as usual, we're going to get as far as we possibly can. We will take a short break before the 6:00 public hearing. If there is business that we do not finish prior to, we will obviously, after the public hearing, immediately go back, finish what we need to finish, and then wrap up the business of the city. Do we have any agenda modifications today, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. One item that's been added to your agenda is item 5.03, Presentation of Proclamation for Be My Neighbor Day.
Okay. Any questions on the agenda modifications? All right. Colleagues, if you want to join me for three proclamations, I would love to have you. And if I could get my friends from the Survive and Thrive Advocacy Center to please come join as well for this all-important proclamation.
Ladies and gentlemen, from the governing body of the city of Tallahassee, a proclamation: Whereas January is National Human Trafficking Prevention Month and is observed in communities across the country, and whereas human trafficking is a $150 billion a year global criminal enterprise and a human rights violation, and whereas Florida is ranked third in the nation by the National Human Trafficking Hotline, and whereas here in Tallahassee, sex and labor traffickers ruthlessly target and exploit children and youth, persons of color, the LGBTQ plus population, homeless and displaced individuals, persons with disabilities, immigrants, college students, those with financial hardships, and many others for greed and profit because human trafficking happens in all communities, not just major metropolitan areas. And whereas city government plays a vital role in preventing sex and labor trafficking and supporting care for trafficking survivors by educating all city employees, including law enforcement, inspectors, emergency responders, security, and utility workers, by supporting community nonprofits, businesses, and members of the public who gather for city-sponsored programs and events with information about human trafficking. And whereas the Survive and Thrive Advocacy Center is marking 10 years of service to this community, assisting over 250 human trafficking survivors to heal and rebuild their lives, and educating over 21,000 individuals so they can prevent, recognize, and respond to human trafficking situations. And whereas everyone in the community has a role to play in ending human trafficking, supporting survivors, and stopping human traffickers from exploiting the vulnerable and those in need. Now therefore, I, John Evans Daley, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize January 2025 as National Human Trafficking Prevention Month, read into the record in front of each and every one of you here today, signed with my signature, John Daley, dated January 15, 2025. It is my honor and privilege to present you with this proclamation.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, city commissioners. All of you have been amazing and stalwart champions in the fight against human trafficking, and we thank you. I'd also like to acknowledge the people who are with us today, STACK Board members, and I'll just start from this direction. Melissa Wright, who was STACK's president-elect and treasurer, also Neepa Eason, who is STACK's board president, Harley Gordon, who is our newest staff member and Mr. Mayor. I have to tell you something. Your office recommended when an eager young college student came knocking on your door and asked, "What can I do in this community?", your office sent her to our office, and she was an intern, and now we have hired her, and she will be working with STACK when she graduates in May. So it takes a village, Harley. And also Gwen Verastek, who I will explain why Gwen is here. Gwen is the CEO of CCYS Capital, City Youth Services. So, I want to say thank you indeed. As the proclamation said, STACK is this community's agency to help support survivors of sex and labor trafficking. As you said, Mr. Mayor, trafficking is right here, not just in big cities. And unfortunately, human trafficking is one of those phenomenons where sometimes it's misunderstood greatly. We've all seen the movie Taken. We all see what Hollywood does to this issue. But I need to tell you that of the 250 people that STACK has assisted, not one has been snatched and grabbed off the streets. What happens with human trafficking is traffickers know their victims, that they groom their victims. Family members are traffickers. Employers are traffickers. People who are in the trusted realm of a victim traffic them. So we have a big job to do, which is essentially to dispel the myths and misinformation about trafficking, so that what we always say is, we always want to say, "If you see something, say something, right?" But if you don't understand, say that boys can be sex trafficked just as much as girls. If you saw a boy, you might not say something. So that's our motto in a lot of what we do, is see something, say something. The other thing I want to do is say thank you to the city and the county as well for supporting STACK with training dollars. Over the past, because of you, we have been able to train thousands of people in Leon County and Tallahassee workplaces to be able to spot the signs of trafficking in our community, and that is so vital. We also want to emphasize that there are things that all of us can do all the time to spot the signs and the potential signs of human trafficking. That's the number-one thing. And what we see often with this issue is that trends that are going on in society often reflect back on who we see as our clients. So when you think about homelessness and people who are unhoused, what we're seeing now is landlords, unscrupulous landlords, as traffickers, telling people that in order to keep the roof over your head and my building, you have to do the following, and it could be forced sex or it could be forced labor, because we have a housing crisis. We saw it also during the opioid epidemic, as people became more addicted. There was a case of a nurse's aide who became addicted to oxy after minor surgery in our community. Again, with the epidemic of that opioid epidemic, what we saw then was her selling herself, and then being trafficked, and then giving the trafficker her child, who then he trafficked. So what we see is that trafficking is a crime of many crimes, and it often links directly with other things that are going on in our society. So that means that everybody who's doing anything to help with any vulnerability in our community is doing anti-human trafficking work. So we thank you very much for all of that. The other thing I wanted to mention was, in this past year, and this is news, STACK has developed an even deeper partnership with Capital City Youth Services, and that's why Gwen Verastek is here. I wanted to share this with you because especially on the issue of homelessness and unhoused, that CCYS was successful in obtaining federal dollars and bringing those dollars into our community to help house victims of trafficking. And that means everything from emergency housing, like overnight, and hotels and short-term housing, to long-term housing. So I want to give a deep thank you to CCYS and Gwen. We've worked with CCYS for a very long time, and it's an unfortunate reality that a high percentage of the families and the youth that CCYS serves have been trafficked, have been immediately affected by human trafficking, or are at pretty severe risk. So this partnership is one, I think, that will be of a great service to our community as we move forward. And that's also part of our second motto, which is "It takes a village," and it always takes a village to deal with any of these issues, and we remain so grateful. And I'd like to take just one more moment, if I could, and ask Neepa Eason to come up and tell you about what's going on this January, Human Trafficking Awareness Month, so we all can continue being educated and smart about this issue.
Thank you, Robin. It's so nice to meet all of you here. As Robin mentioned, it's Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month, and STACK has many activities planned for this month. So if you go to our website, surviveandthriveadvocacycenter.org, you can find more information about all of these activities. But the big one I wanted to talk to you about is that it is STACK's 10th anniversary. We've been around for 10 years. We're celebrating it like our birthday. It's our 10th birthday, so we would love for you to join us at our event, Imagine Freedom, on January 28, from 5:30 to 7:00. And we'll be celebrating our birthday. We'll be showing gratitude to all of the individuals and organizations that we've partnered with and that we've developed deep roots with in our city. And so we would love to have all of you there. I think it would be a great opportunity to get to know the organization and the work that we do. And again, it's our 10th birthday, so there's going to be birthday cake. You can't really say no to that, right? All right. Thank you so much.
All right. Can we get a picture?
Absolutely.
All right. to please come forward for the Arbor Day recognition. That would be absolutely fantastic. I would. What's going on, everybody?
Good to see you. Thank you so much. Appreciate you. Good to see you. Good to see you. You all right? Guys, appreciate you. I can see you. You all right? Good to see you. Good to see you, guys. Hey, Reggie.
All right. Good to see you.
All right, I'm going to let y'all arm wrestle. Who's going to speak? Brian speaking?
Yes.
All right. Sounds good. Sounds good. Ladies and gentlemen, from the governing body of the city of Tallahassee, a proclamation: Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can cut energy for use for heating and cooling, help clean the air, reduce stormwater runoff, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas Tallahassee has one of the highest percentages of tree canopy coverage in the nation at 55%, and has for 31 consecutive years been recognized by the Arbor Day Foundation as a Tree City USA community. And whereas a healthy urban forest has repeatedly been shown to be a critical component to a vibrant and livable community economically, environmentally, and socially. And whereas the city of Tallahassee continues to implement the recommendations set forth within the Urban Forest Master Plan, which serves as a guide to enhance our community's tree canopy now and in the future. And whereas the city of Tallahassee employs more than 28 certified arborists and tree care professionals who provide close care for trees within our public rights away, participate in reforestation efforts, and help educate residents about the proper care for trees on private property. And whereas hundreds of trees are planted by the city of Tallahassee on residential property each year, free of charge, though its popular adoptive tree program, which expanded this year in response to damage to the tree canopy caused by the May 10 tornadoes. And whereas trees have always been an essential part of our community's excellent quality of life, adding joy and spiritual comfort to generations of residents and visitors alike. Now therefore, I, John Evans Daley, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Tallahassee, do hereby proclaim Saturday, January 25, 2025, as Arbor Day in the city of Tallahassee, and urge all citizens to plant and care for trees to help continue the long-lasting relationship between trees and our community. Read into the record in front of each and every one of you here today, signed with my signature, John E. Daley, dated January 15, 2025. First and foremost, how about a round of applause for this amazing team behind us? All right, man, you're up.
Thank you. Yeah, Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We hope to have a great turnout next Saturday, January 25, at Myers Park, at 9:00 a.m., for our Arbor Day tree planting event. As most people know, the Myers Park area was one of the areas heavily impacted by the May tornadoes, so this event will mean a lot both to the Myers Park neighborhood and the Woodland Drives neighborhood, but also to the community as a whole. The event is going to feature a free tree giveaway for city residents. It will also be celebrating the Myers Park 100th anniversary with some additional fun activities planned for the day. Please come out if you can. It should be a wonderful event. I'd like to thank the mayor and commissioners for always supporting the city's tree canopy through policy, and I'd like to thank my fellow arborists and tree care professionals for the wonderful work that they do. Thank you.
Thank you. and join us for a very special... I love this proclamation every year. How are y'all doing? Good to see you. Good to see you. Would anybody like to provide comments after?
It will.
David, I'll turn it over to you. Good to see you. Yeah. Ladies and gentlemen, from the governing body of the city of Tallahassee, a proclamation: Whereas February 8, 2025, has been designated by the city of Tallahassee as Be My Neighbor Day, a nationwide movement celebrating the legacy of Mr. Rogers' Neighborhood with his signature question and song, "Won't You Be My Neighbor?" And whereas WFSU Public Media, Daniel Tiger, in the city of Tallahassee, welcomes a new generation of children and families to our neighborhood with a special event showcasing our Tallahassee neighbors. And whereas WFSU Public Media has been providing television excellence to our community now more for 64 years, and has worked tirelessly to provide free educational programs for educators, parents, and children in person, and now to the virtual world. And whereas the legacy of Fred Rogers and Daniel Tiger reaches thousands of our youngest citizens daily, the lessons are shared, are timeless, and reflect the best that all of us strive to be. Daniel teaches us that it feels good to be neighborly and that one kind act lead to many. And whereas during Be My Neighbor Day, with generous support from the Florida Prepaid College Board, friends from all over our community will share stories, crafts, and activities, bringing the best of our city's history, culture, arts, and environment. And whereas by partnering with local organizations can help to promote the awareness of programs and services, including quality exhibits and hands-on activities for young children and their families throughout the year. And whereas the Tallahassee City Commission believes that engaged and connected community is a happy community, let us all renew our commitment to the message of Be My Neighbor Day. Do something nice for your neighbor. Do something nice for your friend. And whereas I urge all residents to participate in activities and initiatives that promote kindness and generosity, let this day serve as a reminder to be good neighbors, to reach out to those in need, and to build a strong, more caring community. Now therefore, I, John Evans Daley, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Tallahassee, do hereby proclaim February 8, 2025, as Be My Neighbor Day, read into the record and witness of each and every one of you here today, signed with my signature with today's date, January 15, 2025. David, let me present this to you first on behalf of everyone, and I will turn the microphone over to you. Absolutely.
So I'm David Mullins. I'm the general manager of WFSU, and in 1969, Fred Rogers stood, or I think sat, in front of a Senate Subcommittee on Communications that was determining whether funding was going to be in place for PBS children's programming and PBS in general. He spoke for about seven minutes, and at the end of that, not even an impassioned speech, but just a knowledge of the impact that video at that time, television, could have on the young minds that PBS children's programming has been providing for so many years. And so 55 years later, we're here to celebrate Fred, but also to invite you to become a part of our neighborhood at WFSU on February 8 for our Be My Neighbor Day. So thank you, Mr. Mayor and commissioners, for your commission support, but also for your personal support of WFSU through the years. Education is one of the tenets of what we do at WFSU. You think about us as a television station, as your PBS station, or your NPR station, but so much of the impact that this organization has for our community is through the work of Tasha Weinstein and her great staff. And I just want Tasha to just explain just a little bit about what they do in the community every day. Tasha.
It's really difficult to talk about what we do in just a short amount of time, so I'll speak really quickly. First, thank you for being our neighbors. And if you watched Sesame Street or Mr. Rogers' Neighborhood when you were growing up, raise your hand high. Yay! Awesome! You are all invited February 8. Please join us. We'd love to have you, and we might even have you singing. But other work that we do in the community, just since we've been back since break, we've been with Head Start and doing professional development with their educators. We've been at Appalachia every day this week, implementing a new program that we're piloting through our Ready to Learn work. And all of this is done with this amazing staff. Ryan is over here. She's our coordinator, and if you would like to participate in Be My Neighbor Day and be one of our official partners, please reach out to her, Ryan Lynn. We have Will Cotor. Will is our web guru, and Olivia is our Ready to Learn Across the State guru. And then we have wonderful interns with us here today, as well as our fabulous general manager. So delighted to see you guys, and thank you so much, Mayor, for giving us our proclamation today.
Excellent. Can we get a picture with the fabulous general? Mr. Manager, do we have any announcements to come before the Board of the City Commission Oh, please. Great job. tonight?
No, sir.
Do we have any appearances by other governmental entities to come before the City Commission tonight?
No, sir.
We are on the consent agenda. Have any items been pulled off the consent agenda?
No, sir.
Do we have any public comment on any of the consent agenda items?
No, sir.
Okay. Direction for...
Move to accept consent agenda.
The mayor pro tem has moved to accept the consent agenda, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. We are on the introduction of ordinance. By the way, I have been advised that we do not need to take public comment on the introductions because they're simply just the introductions being read into the record, yet when they come back is when it's the appropriate time for public comment.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. Both the ordinance that are the statute that governs the adoption of ordinances requires public comment at the time of public hearing, and the Sunshine Law requires that the City Commission take public comment on any item at some time prior to a vote on that item. So both of those statutes would be, we would be in compliance with both of those statutes if you don't take public comment at the first reading.
Wonderful. All right. Madam Attorney, 11.01, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 11.01 is the introduction of ordinance number 25-0-1, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, amending Chapter 9 of the Tallahassee Land Development Code concerning subdivisions, technical amendments, and limited partitions, providing for conflicts, severability, and an effective date. The recommended action is option 1, introduce ordinance number 25-0-1, and schedule the first and only public hearing on February 12, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. in the city of Tallahassee City Commission chambers at City Hall.
As it has been read into the record. We're in 11.02. Madam Attorney?
Item number 11.02 is the introduction of ordinance number 25-0-3, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, amending Section 2-21 of the Code of General Ordinances regarding appointments to the Ethics Board, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. The recommended action is option 1, introduce ordinance number 25-0-3, and schedule the first and only public hearing on February 12, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. in the city of Tallahassee City Commission chambers at City Hall.
Excellent. As it has been read into the record...
Both the ordinance that, or the statute that governs the adoption of ordinances requires public comment at the time of public hearing, and the Sunshine Law requires that the city commission take public comment on any item at some time prior to a vote on that item. So both of those statutes would be, we would be in compliance with both of those statutes if you don't take public comment at the first reading.
Wonderful. All right, Madam Attorney, 11.01, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 11.01 is the introduction of ordinance number 25-0-01, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, amending Chapter 9 of the Tallahassee Land Development Code concerning subdivisions, technical amendments, and limited partitions, providing for conflicts, severability, and an effective date. The recommended action is option 1, introduce ordinance number 25-0-01 and schedule the first and only public hearing on February 12, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. in the city of Tallahassee City Commission chambers at City Hall.
As it has been read into the record. We're in 11.02, Madam Attorney.
Item number 11.02 is the introduction of ordinance number 25-0-03, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, amending Section 2-21 of the Code of General Ordinances Regarding Appointments to the Ethics Board, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. The recommended action is option 1, introduce ordinance number 25-0-03 and schedule the first and only public hearing on February 12, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. in the city of Tallahassee City Commission chambers at City Hall.
Excellent, as it has been read into the record. 11.03, Madam Attorney.
Item number 11.03, introduction of ordinance number 25-0-04, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, amending Chapter 2, Article 3, Division 2, and Article 6, Division 2 of the Code of General Ordinances Regarding the Office of the Inspector General and the Audit Committee, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. The recommended action is option 1, introduce ordinance number 25-0-04 and schedule the first and only public hearing on February 12, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. in the city of Tallahassee City Commission chambers at City Hall.
As it has been read to the record. Do we have any other ordinances to be introduced tonight, Madam Attorney?
We do not.
We're on Policy Formation Direction, 12.01. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At your November meeting, you asked for an update regarding the Safe Streets for All Plan. Everyone knows, I think Greg Slay, he's the executive director of the CRTPA, which is the Capital Regional Transportation Planning Agency. That is the MPO, or the Metropolitan Planning Organization, for our region. That's a four-county region, including Leon, Gaston, Jefferson, and Wakulla. And Greg and his team are the lead on the coordination implementation of this plan. As I understand it, the CRTPA has approved this back in 2023, and Greg is here to provide an update on that.
Excellent. Mr. Slay, good to see you, sir.
Good to see you as well.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Actually, it feels a little odd standing on this side of the podium as many meetings I do, and I think this is the first time I've ever done one like this. So as Mr. Goode said, I'm going to walk you through kind of just a brief background on the Safe Streets for All program, and then update you on the projects that we have going. Hopefully. There you go. The purpose of the Safe Streets for All Action Plan was in response to the Safe Streets for All program that was part of the bipartisan infrastructure law of 2021. It was a program specifically designed for local governments to apply for funds for safety improvements in their jurisdictions. We began the plan development in September of 2022 and finished it up in June of '23. So all the data that we used was a five-year period from 2017 to 2021, since that was the most complete year we had at the time. One of the founding kind of principles of the plan is a requirement that we do somewhat of an aspirational goal, or long-term goal of zero fatalities by 2040, and that was included in the plan. Just a couple of bullets about the overall program itself. That's, it was allocated $5 billion over a five-year period. I have to say, in all my years, that is by far the most money we've ever seen specifically allocated for safety for local governments. One of the caveats of this program, which was very unique, is that it did not allow state DOTs to apply for these funds. It can only be a local jurisdiction. The Safety Action Plan is a key component of the overall program. In order for a local jurisdiction to apply for these funds, an action plan has to be in place. So rather than apply for planning funds to start the action plan, we actually used our own funds, knowing that would give our local agencies at least a one-year jumpstart on everybody else to be able to apply for those funds. Just real quick again, the plan includes an overall safety analysis, historical crash analysis, I mentioned in this case was 17 to 21. We look at the types of crashes. We see probably our most predominant, what we call lane departure crashes, rear-end angle crashes, that's when somebody turns in front of you at a red light or a stop sign or something. We actually separated out the bicycling pedestrian crashes as well, because we know there's a lot of emphasis on those, and also provided crash summaries for each of our four counties that we cover. The most significant component of the plan is what's called the High Injury Network. In order for a project to be eligible, it has to be identified as part of this network in the action plan, and that is basically a series of roadways that have a higher-than-average crash rate depending on traffic counts, length of facility, and things like that. So we mapped that out. We actually did two different ones. We went through first and what did what were referred to as all crashes, vehiculars, pedestrians, bicyclists, everybody. There's a pretty standard formula that you use for vehicular crashes related to 100 million miles of travel, which works very well for vehicles. It does not work well for bikes and pedestrians. So we actually separated that out into what we called Vulnerable Users High Injury Network. We actually looked at crashes per mile as part of that particular segment of the plan. Actually, the maps don't show up very well here, but you can see, you know, as with most probably municipalities, the bulk of your high injury network is in the downtown area. When you think about it statistically, that's where you have the greatest number of cars interacting on a given day. We see things like Appalachia Parkway, Spring Saks and Ridge Road to the south, which I'll discuss as another project here in a little bit. The vulnerable users, this was pretty consistent with what we're aware of. You see North Monroe, West Tennessee, the Parkway, Capital Circle Southwest. Interestingly enough, we found that a lot of those quarters, especially those three, are in close, as well, excuse me, Pensacola, West Pensacola as well, are in close proximity to known homeless encampments. When we did the work on North Monroe, we actually walked the corridor with the sheriff's office homeless outreach street team, the host team, and actually gained a lot of insight with those guys about some of the homeless issues. You'll also see on there as well, Pensacola and St. Augustine. It was part of a project the city did here on the last few months. So the progress to date on the, on the plan itself. A few months ago, the city completed construction on both Pensacola and St. Augustine streets. That included raised crosswalks, speed tables, reduced speed limits. That project was about $250,000. In talking to Mr. Schaefer earlier, they planned to go out and do a post-analysis on this quarter to see the impact that it had on the, or the improvements had on the accidents. You generally want to wait about six to nine months after something like that to give folks time to get used to it and kind of get into a normal driving pattern. Right now, construction that's funded, we have Pensacola Street from the railroad overpass to Stadium Drive. This is a DOT resurfacing project. About two years ago, we went out with the department and conducted what's called a roadway safety audit. That audit identified several different improvements, including crosswalks and additional lighting. So we were lucky enough to get those incorporated as part of the resurfacing project. That project should start probably in the next 60 to 90 days, so that was something we'll see coming along very, very shortly. Tennessee Street from Enan Church Road to Bluntstown Street, that's a lighting project. This is an area in particular, we've seen over the last few years, we have several pedestrian fatalities out there. The department's going to be installing some additional lighting in that segment here in the near future. Tennessee Stadium Drive, again, another DOT project. They're installing new signal, upgraded signage, and striping. That was one of the hotspot intersections that we identified as part of the Safe Streets for All program. So again, it's good to see money getting to these projects that we identified. Monroe Street, John Knox Road to Lake Shore Drive, this is a new sidewalk. I believe this is the only remaining sidewalk gap on North Monroe Street, south of the interstate, and is a much-needed project. There's a Star Metro bus stop there. The price on this is a little high, but if you recall, especially in and around with Whataburger, Krispy Kreme Donuts, there's a lot of large drainage structures in there. So that really drove the price of this project up, but it was a much-needed project. And again, that one should start construction here in the next couple of months. This is probably the big win, I would say, and congratulate the city on. This is the Jake Gaither Pedestrian Safety, Street Safety Project, excuse me. This was awarded a $9.6 million Safe Streets for All grant. I believe the total cost of this project's around 11 or 12 million dollars total. Part of that includes the city's match for federal dollars, excuse me. Moving on into, oh, that's one thing I almost forgot. I want to let you know too, and this is not necessarily associated with the High Injury Network, but the city has received about $5 million in federal funds to do sidewalk projects over the next three years. That includes Waverly Way, old St. Augustine, there's a couple of safe routes to school projects in there associated with Sable Palms, and another one that just completely, I'm just blanking. There's about $5 million in federal funds for those sidewalk projects. In terms of additional planning completed, our agency completed the North Monroe Implementation Plan late last year. This included an application for Safe Streets for All funds with blueprint providing a local match of about $21 million total, was submitted in July of '24. Unfortunately, we were not awarded the funds. We also submitted a comprehensive road analysis for Tennessee Street from Enan Church to Monroe back in August, and again, unfortunately, we're not awarded that. In our follow-up conversations with Federal Highway, we actually did find out, which was good news, both of these were highly rated and submitted up the chain for funding, but unfortunately did not make the final cut. Our additional planning, we've just started. This is our High Injury Network Corridors Plan. The city approached this a few months ago and asked that if we would complete the analysis required for this, that they would find the money to do the match for another SS4A implementation. I put the list of projects in your agenda memo, and you'll see some of the crash statistics associated with those corridors. It also includes two of our vulnerable user corridors, Appalachia Parkway and Tennessee Street, again, around the Enan Church Road area. We at least wanted to drop down and focus on that shorter segment on Tennessee, but that's where we've seen the highest number of pedestrian fatalities in that particular area. Also too, DOT is doing a review of Tennessee Street from Dewey to High Street. I believe this was at the request of FSU. They're going through and doing a review of the pedestrian infrastructure there and looking to see if improvements can be made through there. They're probably kicking that off here in the next month or two. And ourselves, along with TPD and FSUPD, will be involved in that study as well. With that, one thing I did want to add, and this is, I guess, a bit of good news, especially on the pedestrian crash site. When you look at, there's been some articles recently that reference around 215 or so pedestrian crashes within the city or the county last year. When we're going through and doing some of the analysis, we have found that that number is overstated by about 25%. And it's interesting, it's one of those things, you know, I guess if you look at crash reports long enough, you find these things. But the example that we saw a lot was if you're in a, if you're in a coffee shop and somebody backs into your car, you walk out, okay, law enforcement's called, report's written up. Because of the read, because of the way the crash reports are required to be filled out, you're actually listed as a pedestrian. So there's no, you know, you weren't struck, there wasn't a pedestrian struck. So we've, we have talked about the folks then at the UF GeoPlan Center. They manage Signal 4, which is our crash analytics program that we use. And they've acknowledged that they, it's a known problem, and they are looking for ways to get around that. But, so when you see that figure, and I'm not going to fault the reporting, because if you go to the DHSMV site or the Signal 4 site, that's the number that you get, it's just a quirk, like I said, in the way the crash reports are read. Mr. William Cox, you may know a little bit about that. But it's, at least, you know, it's, when you see that number, it's about, it's overstated by about 25%. So I just at least wanted to add that, let you know, there is, there is a little bit of good news when we start talking about pedestrian crashes in general. With that, Mr. Mayor, I am good to go, or am ready to take any questions.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right. The action before us is just to accept the report as presented. Thank you, Mr. Slay. We appreciate it. Stick around. Questions? Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the presentation and all your work on this issue. I have a few questions for you, and then a few questions for, that probably should be directed to city staff. But for you, I was just curious, I noticed that for almost all the counties in the region, that May, July, and October have the greatest number of crashes, like you see that spike? And I was wondering if you know why that is?
Anecdotally?
Yeah.
I would say probably, you know, schools getting out, coming back.
So I thought about that, but then you see it in the other areas too that don't have the same influx, you know?
I will tell you right off the bat, there's a lot of strange patterns that we see that we don't have a concrete answer for.
Okay.
I mean, you know, if it's late at night.
Right, right.
We see a lot of alcohol-related crashes late at night, you know? If I see a report that says, you know, a crash at 2 o'clock in the morning, I'm going to go, there's alcohol. More than likely, it's alcohol-related. But I, I tend to go with the college thing, but I completely agree.
Right.
It doesn't necessarily match up with the other counties.
Okay, thank you. I think that was my main question, that, I was just curious about that when I saw that. I think my other questions are probably for city staff and are a little bit more about our implementation.
Okay.
If anyone's available.
You still have the floor, Commissioner?
Okay. Yeah, I wasn't sure if Steve or someone else was going to come up, but I'll just ask my question, and then whoever feels they can answer it can go ahead. So I, in the report, there are, you know, the vulnerable road user high injury network, there's 30 roadways in Leon County that are designated as higher, medium hazard, and then for, and then there's 102 high injury network roadways that are high or medium hazard streets in Tallahassee, I believe, or it may be the county. And, you know, so there's the identification of the high injury networks, then there's projects, and then there's recommendations. And there's a few other things, but those are kind of the big categories. And my question is, and I know we went over some in the presentation, sort of, who at the city is managing those projects? I mean, I understand that these are kind of recommendations that were made working with city staff and that aligned with some of projects we already had identified, and that not all of these are funded. Most of them don't seem to be funded, as far as I can tell. And so really what I'm trying to get at is, what is the city really doing with this plan? Because I read things like, you know, one of the recommendations, for example, is, and some of them are very general in a good way, I mean, you know, review existing bicycle, pedestrian master plans and update outdated recommendations. Expand data collection efforts regarding roadway safety and traffic through regular roadway safety audits where crash data indicates there may be an issue. Another one was conduct level of comfort analyses for bicyclists and pedestrians to determine locations in need of improvement. You know, those kinds of things, and I'm wondering, like, kind of, who at the city, if anyone, is making a decision about which of these recommendations to implement, on what timeframe, with what support? Because, you know, they're good recommendations, they spent a lot of time on this, and so I want to make sure that I understand what we're doing with this document and with, you know, we reviewed some of the projects, but there's 36 projects that are just assigned to the city, you know, within city limits on a different timeframe between, you know, one to five years implementation. So I was hoping you could speak to that. I know it was kind of a, there's many points to that question, but that's what I'm trying to get, get at.
And thank you for the question, Commissioner. Our Public Infrastructure Engineering section is probably the main point of contact that the city has in coordination with our, with the planning department and the bike pad folks, et cetera. They will be looking at these projects, they've been looking at these projects. What do we do with them? I think the, the example that Greg mentioned on the Safe Streets for All grant that we got in the Jake Gaither neighborhood is a good example of, through the data and the support that they gave us with their high-level review, we were able to use that to draft an application for that significant grant that was well-received and awarded. We will be continuing to look, very interested to see their next stages on, as they start looking at these corridors, high injury, high injury network corridors that have raised to the level that they want to take those to the next phase, and seeing what kind of root causes that they identify as they're looking at those, and see if those root causes can be addressed through engineering solutions or other solutions. So we're, we're working in conjunction with them, hand in hand, while we're also doing our own investigations. We've got a traffic study group that does studies for all sorts of pedestrian and vehicular related crash issues that are brought to our attention. They'll be looking at these as well. I mean, they, a lot of what we look at will be, do we have the visibility that we need for pedestrians and vehicles? We are implementing in our resurfacing program, every resurfacing project is sent to the bike pad coordinators to ask for their input on whether we could install charos and bike lanes in conjunction with our resurfacing program. So we're attacking this from a lot of different angles.
Okay, thank you. So could someone, in theory, like, is there a spread? So could someone, in theory, like, is there a spreadsheet or something where I can see the 36 projects that were identified at the city? Kind of what stage of progress are we at with each of those projects?
And I'm a double check with Greg here, but I think the 36 segments, I don't think there are projects that are identified, there are areas that we need to look at.
Yeah, they're just, it's, I mean, the, and you can correct me, it's just the CRTPA Safety Action Plan Project List, and then it has, you know, for example, the first one is Alabama Street, Birmingham Street to Old Bainbridge Road.
Yes, ma'am. Steve's correct. Those weren't necessarily projects. As I mentioned, the, the work we're doing now with the high injury network corridor, that's where we get to the stage where we actually develop those into actual projects. That was just the high level, that we have a crash, a high crash ratio here, then we have to go back and look at the countermeasures to actually turn those into what I would call a project.
Okay. And, sorry, I'm just hearing noise. Okay, thank you. And then, this is my last question, like, for example, has anyone at the city conducted a level of comfort analysis for bicyclists and pedestrians that we know of?
I'll take that one. And actually, Commissioner, that should have, that should have pointed, we should have referenced the other three counties in their bike ped plans. The Tallahassee-Leon County bike ped plan actually has a level of comfort, level stress is what it's listed to.
Okay.
That should have specifically referenced the other three counties. They have bike ped program or plans, but they don't have, they're a bit dated, they don't have that level of stress or level of comfort.
Okay, and that makes sense, because some of these, I did think, like, we are doing this or have done this, but it just says local municipalities, it doesn't, so, okay, thank you. That was all for me.
You have the, Commissioner Matlow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess first I want to, I want to acknowledge, and Mr. Slay touched on it, the $5 billion that was kind of injected from the federal government into local communities. I think, in my lifetime, I don't think we've seen the amount of investment in the local infrastructure that we saw from the Biden administration, so I just wanted to recognize that and express my appreciation. I think we've seen it from our roads to our airport, an unprecedented amount of investment in our community. I have one question, Mr. Manager, and I'm not sure who to ask, but I'm just curious is, from a growth management perspective, and I'm thinking about, so Gain Street, we redeveloped the road, we made pedestrian safety, we slowed traffic, and then that redeveloped, and I think largely we consider it a safe corridor. When we looked at Pensacola, St. Augustine, Madison, kind of those investments that we made, and that, those areas just recently, I'm wondering, through the growth management process, when we have large developments coming in, is pedestrian safety enhancements considered at that time? Is there any efforts in currency to fund those? And I'm going to, just to expand the question a little more, I'm particularly thinking about Frenchtown and the Tennessee Street corridor, as those new developments are made. We know the vast majority of those people are going to be trying to cross Tennessee Street. What are we doing to get ahead of that? Who's paying for it? Those sorts of things.
Mr. Mayor, I think, I think John could, I think the question is, what's the approach when we have new development? How do we look at roads and sidewalks? And I think we start there, if we can answer that question, because we, we do that, you're right, that's the right point, to do it, and John can describe how we do it, I think that would be helpful.
Mr. Radick, happy new year. Thanks for joining us.
Happy new year to you, and thank you, Commissioner, for the question. And that's sort of beyond growth management, too, in conjunction with Steve Schaefer's team and UUPI, and how we review these projects when they come in. The first priority for the multimodal district, when, in these examples we're talking about, is, in terms of improving pedestrian safety, is sidewalk upgrades. So we see this substantial expansion of sidewalk infrastructure and connectivity into the existing network. So for example, if you're going on an arterial roadway and you have a, a lot of them may have a five-foot or smaller sidewalk currently, you know, our new standard is going to be the best, go to a 10-12-foot sidewalk. We also prioritize, for example, where feasible, they're often working around a lot of utility challenges, for example, but putting our streetscaping, like our beautification, our trees and landscaping between the roadway and the sidewalk, as both a, you know, for basically a number of benefits, but one which being a safety measure for pedestrians. I will say, you know, a lot of the quarters we're talking about where we're seeing improvements right now, like along Tennessee Street, our biggest level of coordination has to be with FDOT, because they have the ultimate jurisdiction there. But, you know, this is, they recognize as priority for us along a busy thoroughfare like Tennessee Street, where we have a lot of, adding a lot of pedestrian activity. But to things like, other facilities like crossing improvements and things like that that may be warranted, when you're seeing additional pedestrian traffic come in into an area, that's where I'll, you know, give credit to Steve Schaefer's team, and that's where they're really looking at it, similar to how they look at how a large project may affect signal changes or something like that in terms of traffic circulation. So there are some, you know, physical improvements that we, we require with new construction, that the developers are responsible for paying, and we are conscientious in how that's actually designed, to make sure it's prioritizing safety, pedestrian safety is a big part of that. But then there is sort of a network and operational side of it, too, that our, that our traffic engineering staff plays a big role in.
Okay.
Commissioner Matlow?
Yeah, if I, if I can follow up, and I appreciate that, so, I recognize Tennessee, and, you know, we don't have that much control over the speed limit on Tennessee and what changes could be made there. But, you know, specifically when we're looking at, you know, new areas that have massive pedestrian increases, we're expecting to see a lot more pedestrian traffic, not, I think the, the biggest point, sidewalks helpful, but it's the crossing, particularly of these major roadways. So my question is, much like we analyze parking requirements and traffic requirements, and there's some sort of fee associated with the stress on the system, are there any fees for new developments that are creating pedestrian areas that are going directly into pedestrian safety?
And I would say that's actually covered under the umbrella of our concurrency system, and that those funds are eligible to be allocated towards sidewalk, any sort of pedestrian-related improvements. So that often may go towards implementing projects we have, I say we, again, our public infrastructure team has lined up on our capital improvements plan. So it would be a matter of perhaps, for example, prior, knowing what priorities we have in those areas, and using, having concurrency funds that come through those projects available to be able to allocate towards those.
And are we prioritizing any pedestrian infrastructure projects based on the developments we, I'm, I'm really, not casting blame on anything like in the past, but I think you could say, hey, maybe we should have thought at, you know, hindsight's 20/20, you know, there's a lot of new developments coming on, putting these roadway improvements. So I, particularly, Greg Slay mentioned between High and Dewey, but between Dewey and Macomb, where we expect massive redevelopment, you know, I'm not a mind reader, but I think you'll see a lot more pedestrians darting across Tennessee Street in that specific area based on the development that's coming in. So I guess my question is, are, are we thinking of that corridor, how that development's going to impact pedestrian safety? And there's, are there any projects we're looking at? I know if you walk all the way down, you can go under the road, but just, are, are we examining that problem kind of on the front end of how we're going to address it when all that development's built?
And I may actually say, with how, say, like, project by project, or, or infrastructure-related projects, that, that may be something that Steve's team would be able to address better than I could in terms of who's actually implementing, say, the dollars that we collect to, to do those complementing improvements.
Steve, can you add anything to that? And Commissioner, I think, I think it's important to point out, it's been said, but this, you're touching on an issue that we work on every day, so the, the interplay between the state, even the county, you could have a county road involved, which we have no say in. And so while the, you know, land, land development code that the city commission has adopted would say, you have to put sidewalks in, the, you know, distance from the curb, all of those things, we require that, and so we'll do that. And so like the stretch you mentioned between Dewey and Macomb, all that development will compel that pedestrian infrastructure. As it relates to flow across Tennessee Street, that becomes a DOT discussion. Now, and Steve will tell you, Steve, maybe you can add to this, and we work really closely with them, but that gets outside of our control and even the ability to implement, that becomes that working relationship we have. And even some of the standards that we have in our land development code that, that the city commission has adopted, aren't always in line with DOT. So some of the things that we would like to do on that corridor, like along Tennessee Street, may not be exactly what DOT wants. So there's a lot of, like, you know, staff coordination and collaboration, but it's outside of our ability to make it happen, but that, that's the kind of engagement we have. Steve, maybe you can share a little more, but I think that's where we get some, you know, out of, out of our reach, but how we try to implement that.
Yeah, that's exactly right. Corridor-wide, when you're talking about state roads, we do have to work with DOT and, and share with them our concerns, et cetera. On any given development project, though, we are looking at operational impacts and pedestrian-related, and we will identify and require certain countermeasures, if you will, or protective measures to make sure that we don't see any likelihood of exacerbating existing problems through there. For instance, we will look and see where we think pedestrians are going to be coming out of their sight or two, and if it's in the middle of a block, we'll, we'll require, you're going to have to consider looking at a mid-block crossing here with the signalization, et cetera. So we can handle those specifically, even on DOT projects, when we're looking at the specific impacts from that development. Corridor-wide, it's more of a coordination issue with DOT.
Okay, and thank you, and I, I recognize that concern. What I'm focused mostly on is, for a lot of these things, I don't require slowing traffic down, I think DOT is amenable if, if funding is available locally, and, you know, the things we can predict, if there's new development coming on, that is creating the need for local investment in that crossing infrastructure, how we address funding that going forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, on point.
Mm-hmm.
In, in that, in that line, it all kind of sort of begins with planning, because in the planning process, when these developments come before planning for approval, traffic studies have to be done, I'm looking at Artie back there, traffic studies have to be done, and many other things that have to be done and presented to the planning commission to determine if these things can go forward. So by the time the development comes up out of the ground, some of that stuff has already been put in place. Am I correct, Artie? Okay, thank you. Just showing off that I've, I've been on the planning commission. I did learn something.
Any further comments?
One other.
Mayor Pritton?
Thank you, Greg Slay. Greg is our, as was mentioned, he's our executive director, and Commissioner Matlow, Commissioner Richardson, and myself serve on the CRTPA. And those meetings are open to the public.
Yeah.
And you're welcome to come at any time, they're, they're noticed, just like our, all our other meetings, they're on the website. So we encourage the public to come and learn what's happening, and there, you can even have input, you can have comments that can be made at those, at those meetings, and they occur right here in, in chambers.
Is that a motion to accept the report?
That is a motion to accept the report.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I, I might say, you know, I've been around Tallahassee a long time and on this commission for a while. But, but, you know, of course, it's always unfortunate when one life is lost because of a traffic accident. But this is not new to our city, and it's been an issue that has been raised and addressed even in the past to get us to where we are now. Steve, I mean, I, I'm sure you would agree, we didn't just start doing this yesterday, or Artie in terms of, and Commissioner Williams Cox in terms of the planning process, but, you know, anytime you have unfortunate incidents like this that occur, it, it puts it in the news and brings people's attention to it. But this has been something we've been working towards for a good period of time, and certainly aware because of, especially all the students that we have here in the city, and the fact that they do walk from their specific residences to the universities. But certainly something we always need to keep at the forefront of our discussions and funding and planning. But it, but again, it's not new, but something we've had to deal with for a long time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Motion on the table, made by the mayor pro tem, to accept the report, second by Commissioner Richardson, seeing no further. Discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 5-0. We're on item number 12.02, ironically, here we go. Mr. Man.
Very, very fitting, Mr. Mayor. Let me ask Molly LaVesta to come forward, she's got a short presentation. Molly is our capital project manager for UUPI. This item is seeking the commission's approval to seek grant funding for two sidewalk projects that would support Hawks Rise Elementary and Springwood Elementary, both safe routes to schools projects. These have been identified as stat, by staff, as viable projects to get grant funding, and we're asking the commission's approval. Let me ask Molly to give us the context here.
Excellent. Thanks for joining us.
Of course, thank you so much, and good afternoon, Commissioner, Mayor. Want to express my gratitude to go over this topic about safe routes to school, which touches on three of some of me and my fellow engineers' favorite things, which is school, safety, and my particular favorite, sidewalks.
Okay.
So this does touch on, does help fulfill our strategic plan objective for enhancing the city's network of roads, bike lanes, and sidewalks. It really gives us a good opportunity to leverage funding to help support things on our sidewalk priority list. This project does as well touch on the CRTPA's study that was done in 2014, was a comprehensive look at all of Leon County schools and safety recommendations for those. So what is Safe Routes to School? It is a federally funded program that is administered through the Florida Department of Transportation. These funds go to projects that remove the barriers that prevent walking and cycling to school. So things that help, things that are barriers include a lack of infrastructure, some unsafe infrastructure, and also will help fund programs to help promote walking and cycling. We have had considerable success with this project and this grant program in the past. As you can see, over the past 10 years, we've had about $2.8 million worth of funding granted to the city of Tallahassee. That is on top of some of the other programs that we use to leverage funding, such as transportation alternative, which in the past 10 years, we've gotten about $5 million to help support our sidewalk construction network. These projects are in various stages of completion. The top four have been constructed. The second two after that, Roberts and Sable Palm Elementary, those projects are currently in design. And the last two, Fairview Middle School and Pine View Elementary School, those are in the FDOT work program, so those projects will begin design in the next few years. Some before and after shots of our completed projects. We have Alachua Avenue, which provides a safe route to both Kate Sullivan Elementary and Cobb Middle School. Here we have Iamonia Street, which is in the Providence neighborhood, that will help provide a safe route to school to Pine View Elementary. Here we have the Rankin Avenue Sidewalk Project, which is in Seminole Manor, that helps get kids safely to Sable Palm Elementary School. And then we have Branch Street, which is a great project. You can see in the background, that is the playground for Rudiger Elementary School, so it's right next to the school, and helps get students from Rudiger Elementary and Rah Middle School over to Levy Park, that great park right next door to these schools. For the 2025 grant cycle submission, the city plans on submitting Hawks Rise Elementary School and Springwood Elementary School for consideration for grant funding. The Hawks Rise project is proposed to be on Heritage Ridge Road, from the existing sidewalk on Heritage Ridge near Meadow Ridge, up to the existing sidewalk on Summer Brook Drive. Zooming out a little bit, you can see this project is about 1.2 miles walking distance from Hawks Rise Elementary School, and this really will connect these two neighborhoods of Oxbottom and, blinking the, Summer Brook neighborhood to the north. For the Springwood Elementary School project, this project is proposed to take place on North Settlers Boulevard, from Stone Ridge Road up to Fred George Drive, Fred, Fred George Road, and then into the front of the school. Again, kind of zooming out, this project is right next door to the school, and will really give children from that neighborhood immediately to the east a direct route to the front door. give children from that neighborhood immediately to the east a direct route to the front door of their school. So thank you for your consideration, and we recommend, staff recommends option one to support the resolution and accept our application for Safe Routes to School project.
I want you to know how much I appreciate it. On a personal note, I have an eighth grader at Raw Middle School who, right now, every Wednesday walks from Raw to Levy Park on that Branch Street project to catch the church bus and go finish his homework and go to youth. So it is very personal, it is a great project, and thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Excellent. All right. Motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Properly moved by the mayor pro tem.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Richardson. You are recognized for comment, Commissioner.
Thank you, and it's related to this, but we, and I don't know who I would best address it to, maybe you, Mr. City Manager, and you can determine the staff person that can take this forward, but I've noticed recently, and I think they're coming from the apartments on South Adams, but there are kids who are walking along Orange Avenue from South Monroe, South, well, I don't know if they're as far as South Monroe, but they may be from the apartments on South Adams, and they're walking to NIMs. And there are several intersections that they have to cross along, and I mean, there's sidewalks, of course, but the only crossing guard is at the Pasco-Orange Avenue intersection. But there are a couple of intersections, like I said, at Orange and South Adams, and then Althea Gibson Way and Orange Avenue by Bethel AME Church, and those kids are walking unescorted. You know, they're within that two-mile zone of the school, so they don't qualify for transportation. And so if we could have somebody take a look at that.
Yes, sir.
Mr. City Manager, and see if at some point, you know, we did do the crosswalk for NIMs in front of the school to get kids across Orange Avenue there in front of the school, but I've noticed just a larger number of kids making that trek from, apparently it's those apartments on South Adams to NIMs, because it's within that two-mile.
Yes, sir, we'll take a look.
So yeah.
I'll give you an update, yes, sir.
Take a look at that and see if that might be another project we want to consider.
Yes, sir.
We have a motion on the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously five zero. We are on item number 12.03. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my pleasure to introduce this item. This item seeks the city commission's approval to rename Okaloosa Street to Dr. Carolyn Riles' Lane. After moving to Tallahassee to attend FAMU in 1953, Dr. Riles served the community as an educator, small business owner, and in volunteer work. She also served the community through roles on the boards of CK Steel Senior Foundation, the Tallahassee Shelter, the Tallahassee Mayor's Task Force in Homelessness, and the Coalition for Homelessness. In 2004, Dr. Riles was awarded the 2004 FAMU Distinguished Alumni Award for Community Service, and in 2016, she was recognized as a Silver Star by the Tallahassee Senior Center Foundation. It's only fitting that we make this road renaming, and commissioners, if you approve this tonight, the road will be renamed Dr. Carolyn Riles' Lane effective March 3, 2025. This renaming request was initiated by you. Growth management and relevant staff have reviewed it. It would affect 30 properties along the way. The name is proper in accordance with your rules, and we are seeking your approval tonight.
I am sure it'll be unanimously approved. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor, we have one speaker on this item. Stanley Sims. As he comes forward, this is our first speaker of the year, so as in the past, three minutes for each speaker. You'll get a yellow light in front of the mayor when you get to two and a half, as well as a heads up from me before it turns red when your time's expired.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Stanley Sims. This gives me great honor, Mayor, and it is personal. Dr. Riles was my typing teacher. She, what I believe was a person that was ahead of her time. She believed that everyone needed to learn how to type, not just ladies. I look 21, but I ain't been 21 in a long time. When I grew up there, going to school at FAMU High, her kids went to FAMU High, it's there, and I think that I even walked those hallways with Cynthia Barber, with Dr. Riles. Cynthia, it has lost me, but she had a business, was it, was she taught, I don't, I can't remember that acronym, but back then, she was teaching us how to be future business leaders, dressing appropriate. And I also want to commend this commission to see so many, not just like Dr. Riles, but to see other individuals that you have acknowledged and to be able to put their names on the communities that our children grow up in, so that these icons will not be forgotten. Today, we speak your name, Dr. Riles, and I just cannot take my seat without saying, every time, and I guess some things just don't change, but she used to time us. See how accurate or we increasing or decreasing our accuracy with our typing, our business skills, our lesson, and she was, she was tough with a caring hand. And she was, at the end, she would say, stop typing, and Stanley Sims, that means you too, because I would always be trying to get that little extra word in. And so I just wanted to acknowledge her daughter, Tanya Donnell, who has still invested into our city, and I just thank the city for this opportunity.
All right, is there a motion for approval?
So move.
Second.
Is there any objection to a unanimous second? None, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. We're on item number 12.04. Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir. This is indeed a pleasure to introduce this item, Mr. Mayor. This item seeks your approval to rename Osceola Street from South Adams to Althea Gibson Way to Rudy Hubbard Street. You initiated this as well. This impacts 29 properties, has been reviewed by staff, and we seek your approval. If you will, I'd like to read a little bit about Mr. Hubbard, which I think you all know very well. Rudy Hubbard moved to Tallahassee in 1974 to serve as the head football coach at FAMU after serving as the first black assistant coach at Ohio State University. Mr. Hubbard led FAMU to a winning record of 84 wins, 48 losses, and three ties over 12 seasons, winning consecutive black college football national championships in 1977 and 1978. He also won the inaugural NCAA Division I AA Football Championship in 1978. Mr. Hubbard later served as the head football coach at the James S. Rickards High School from 2008 to 2011, and has been well-recognized for his coaching career as a 1990 FAMU Hall of Fame inductee, a 2021 College Football Hall of Fame inductee, and a 2021 recipient of the Key to the City. If approved, again, this would rename the segment of road between Osceola Street and Althea Gibson Way after Mr. Hubbard. Mr. Reddick's here to answer any questions if you have him recording growth management.
Once again, I don't think we'll have a problem with this, but let me check real quick. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, Mayor, we do.
All right, let's get through public comment.
Our first speaker is Curtis Taylor. He'll be followed by Delatory Hollinger.
Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, I'm Curtis Taylor, 923 Obeyment Road. So to the mayor, to our commissioners, and a special thanks to Commissioner Cox for your leadership on this in naming Osceola Street. Am I getting it right, Commissioner Rudy Hubbard Way? Okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Rudy Hubbard Way. You know, I played four years football at FAMU, two years on the big gym, and two years under Coach Hubbard. And so I'm one of Coach Hubbard's dear sons, okay? And so when Coach Hubbard showed up on the scene, everything changed, the way we practiced, the way we played football. Before he got there, if we was going to play football in Washington, guess what? We would ride the bus up there and ride the bus back. When Coach Hubbard arrived, we would fly. Not only that, we used to eat in this cafeteria with all other students. We had a training table where we eat at Perry Page steaks and everything, and we had a great time on the Court Hubbard. And so, as you said earlier, Coach Hubbard went on to win the 1977 National Championship. They beat the University of Miami in Doakama Stadium.
Say that again. Where is Javonte?
They beat the University of Miami in Doakama Stadium. They also won, like you said, the 1978 AA National Championship. He's in the FAMU Hall of Fame, the Black, we have a living legend with us. Let's give him a big round of applause. More importantly, Coach Hubbard was like our father on the field and off the field. He not only prepared us for the football games, but he prepared us for life. We had a solid foundation because of Coach Hubbard when we went out into this world. He encouraged us. He taught us if you fall down, you get back up. If they knock you down, you get back up. You know which foxhole to get in. Now, one day at practice, we had about 100 guys out there. We'd been running and hitting all day sweaty. At the end, we were huddled together, and Coach Hubbard that day made a statement. He said that if I could only pick one man off the team, and if I was in a battle to be in war with me and be in my foxhole, it would be Curtis Cool Taylor. Those words, Mayor, inspired me then. They continue to inspire me now, and that's the reason that I'm in the foxhole at the Urban League for our city making it better because of Coach Rudy Hubbard.
Here, here.
Thank you. So here again, thank you for naming this street very, very well-deserving. Coach Hubbard, we want you to know that we love you, and we thank you for everything that you've done to make us boys to men. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor, also, thank you for your comments. Coach, I would love to give you an opportunity to speak as well, but hold off. I do want to make sure that you know, we were not at the event today that the Urban League was co-hosting with Leon County. We had our annual retreat all day, starting this morning, and we got out about 2:15. But I know it was a wonderful event, and I know that y'all knew that we wouldn't be there, but wanted to make sure for the record that I know it was a great event. Excellent. Wonderful, wonderful. Our next public speaker.
Delatory Hollinger, and then Stanley Sims.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Delatory Hollinger, 750 Wells Street, Tallahassee. Very briefly, I'd like to thank Commissioner Williams Cox for her leadership on this, and we are truly in the presence of greatness. Hall of Fame Coach Rudy Hubbard, who is sitting next to Ms. Jacqueline Perkins, the first female trainer in the history of college football. And that was made possible by Coach Hubbard and George Godfather Thompson, who was trainer at that time. And so, and Ms. Perkins also ran track and was a trainer between '75 and '78. Mr. Taylor played ball between '72 and '76 and was a player for Coach Hubbard. And so we have greatness all on this front row. We have former FAMU athletes and alum, and I don't know if it's appropriate, but I don't think it should be Rudy Hubbard Street. I think it should be Rudy Hubbard Way. We got that covered. We got it covered. We got it covered. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker, Stanley Sims.
Mayor, that's what we said. He was not a university coach. He was a FAMU coach. And when you say a FAMU coach, that includes Lucian Moten, what y'all probably know as the hot. You understand? But homecoming, it was nothing to see the head coach at our games. Not only did he just participate in sports, but programs. What about the numerous times you came to the National Youth Sports Board, talked to our kids, looked at those boys? And you know, and what I like about coach, and Delatory, and you guys, you said it so well, we are sitting among not just greatness, but humble greatness. And I'm so elated that this is happening. And if there was other, if there was one more little request that I could add, can we make that little sign that we got on Monroe Street that says and gives honor that we, FAMU, under this leadership, was the first college in Tallahassee to possess a national championship?
Commissioner Williams Cox, you are recognized for a very special introduction in motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's already been said that we are sitting among greatness, and when I was a student at Florida A&amp;M, Coach Hubbard was the football coach, and he would come into convocation dressed to the nines, shiny shoes, beautiful suits, and we were all chanting, Rudy, 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 do your duty. The football players were there. This was the time when, you know, decor mattered, you know, professionalism mattered, and Coach Hubbard knew when he walked in there, his players were already in there, so he walked in after the players. All eyes were on him, and he's right. Us young girls, us young college girls, yeah, we were watching Coach Hubbard, because he was sharp. He exhibited what men, the kind of men we wanted to be married to, he exhibited, and I was in class with some of his players, and they were gentlemen. They were gentlemen. And we've had some of them, I think at least one of them, on the police force. He's retired now, I believe Rufus Lane was one of them. So it is indeed, as I said to Coach, Coach does not, he does not ask for any of this. We just know that where honor is needed, he's earned it. And I told Coach, he's so, and he's so humble and grateful, I said, Coach, we're not giving you anything. You've earned this. You have earned this. And so I would like to request, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, that, I know the agenda item says Rudy Hubbard Street, but I would request that we would change that to Rudy Hubbard Way, because that's how it was. It was Rudy Hubbard's way. It was Rudy Hubbard's way, and it was a winning way. So, and I wanted Javonte to be here to hear that Florida A&amp;M beat up on University of Miami. Y'all tell him. Y'all tell him. He must be somewhere else, but tell him that it did happen. So Coach Hubbard, he's also married to my homegirl. We're from the same neighborhood over in Quincy. You got him a good Quincy girl, one of the Mashburn girls. And she couldn't be here today. She sent me a message to let me know that she couldn't be here, but we are all so very proud of you, Coach Hubbard. So with your wife's permission, and with the honor that you have bestowed upon us today, would you like to say something?
All right, Coach. Coach, it's great to have you in chambers.
Say it again?
Great to have you in chambers.
Oh, thank you so much, Mayor, and commissioners. I can't believe that the Lord blessed me to come and be the head coach at Florida A&amp;M University. Been a great time in my life, and it kind of reminded me, I was telling Curtis, he told that story very quickly, I'm still telling him that. He would be the guy I'd still pick to be in the foxhole with me. But anyway, I just wanted a little backstory on this. When I started playing football and basketball and ran track and everything, I went to a place called Hubbard High School, city of Hubbard, Ohio. City of Hubbard, Ohio. People didn't believe that. We were about as broke as it could be. So we didn't, we didn't own anything. We didn't own the city or didn't own anything, but it just happened to be that way. So every time I scored a touchdown, it'd be Rudy Hubbard from Hubbard. Most of my life, when I went to Ohio State, they didn't believe it. So it was just coincidental. This is not coincidental. You know, and this time I feel appreciated. And I want to thank everybody who was involved with it. Commissioner Williams Cox, you know you're special to me. Curtis Taylor, couldn't do anything without you. I appreciate everything you've done. One young man here who's here, Percy Griffin. Percy back here played for me. Everybody else has been mentioned. Jackie's been mentioned. But I'm so honored that you guys chose to do this and didn't wait until I'm dead. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I love it.
Amen, amen. So quick question, Coach. Who you got in the college football playoffs? I knew you would say that.
There you go. Coach, it's great to have you here and I have thoroughly enjoyed getting to know you over the years. It was my honor to present you with Key to the City a couple of years ago. And I cannot think of a more deserving honor, especially today, than to be named Rudy Hubbard Way.
Mr. Mayor.
And it's great to hear. By the way, I can't tell you how many times Curtis has told me the foxhole story. I think we've heard it all a million times. He loves to tell that story. He does. But Curtis, it's great to see you too, my man. Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, just very quickly, it certainly means a lot to me to be here and to have an opportunity to vote, to bestow this distinction upon, among, upon our venerable Coach Rudy Hubbard. Rudy and I met on the racquetball courts here in Tallahassee years ago and became personal friends. I could never beat him at racquetball. I would try, but he was good. And so we've been friends ever since. And Rudy, I just want to thank you for all that you've done, not only for Florida A&amp;M University, but certainly for this community over the years that you've been here. And I certainly consider you a very good personal friend of mine. I even had the opportunity to be his Uber driver from the post office today. We were both leaving the post office coming to City Hall. And I said, Coach, you want to ride over with me? He said, oh, I'm riding high now.
There you go.
But that's the kind of friendship that we share and it means a lot to me. And congratulations on this distinction. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. I am going to give the motion for Rudy Hubbard Way to the Mayor Pro Tem. Is there any objection to a unanimous second? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it is unanimous. Congratulations. Mr. Mayor, your rule item 12.05.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item seeks your approval to make an honorary designation of Campbell Street from St. Mark's Street to Althea Gibson Way to E. Lilian Spencer Memorial Way. Now, this does not involve any properties because the street will remain Campbell Street, but it will be a memorial honorary designation if approved. A little bit about Ms. Spencer. Eldess Lilian Spencer was a lifelong Tallahassee resident and graduate of Lincoln High School and FAMU. Ms. Spencer served for 10 years as the principal of Bond Junior High School. During that time, she also served as athletic director and coach for the boys and girls' basketball teams. Ms. Spencer served the community on the Leon County Negro Auxiliary Christmas Seal Sale Committee. I don't know who came up with that name. That's a tough one. For year-round tuberculosis control. She chaired the Negro Division of the March of Dimes Campaign and helped to establish and served as treasurer for the Bond Community Credit Union. If approved, the signs will be produced and the roadway will be dedicated on effective March 3rd, 2025.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
One speaker on this item, Delatry Hollinger.
Your name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you, Commissioner Matlow, for your motion and Commissioner Richardson for your second that made this agenda item possible. I did speak with Ms. Hossi about the item because it did not mention anything about Ms. Spencer's record as a tennis champion. And so I will do that briefly and then I want to make a couple of recognitions. She won a national tennis title at the 1937 Southern Open Championship, also known as the 21st American Tennis Association Nationals. And for those of you who don't know, blacks were banned from playing in the U.S. Open, of course, until Althea Gibson broke the color barrier in tennis. And so that ATA National Championship was held at Tuskegee Institute. And Ms. Spencer won the women's doubles national title along with Bertha Isaacs of Nassau, Bahamas. Her championship feed is mentioned in an exhibit of the International Tennis Hall of Fame, which is entitled Breaking the Barriers: The ATA and Black Tennis Pioneers. She also won 10 straight state women's singles titles in Florida without suffering a defeat in competition. Graduating from Florida A&amp;M University in 1926, she, as the manager mentioned, was an educational administrator who served as principal of Bond Junior High School from 1941 to 1951. Also simultaneously serving as athletic director, math teacher, as well as both boys and girls' basketball coach. She coached her teams to state championships, eventually moving to Rolack Negro High School in Chipley, Florida to coach basketball where her teams were the best in the state. For her work, she was featured by the Florida Interscholastic Coaches Association in 1954. At that time, the St. Petersburg Times wrote that Ms. Spencer was the only Florida woman to have won a national competition. And of course, that was also before Althea won the championships. And so after finding out about her tennis prowess, I went and searched for her. She was in an unmarked grave in Oakland Cemetery. And so a personal effort ensued. And two of the people who contributed their own personal funds to marking her grave, not just with a headstone, but with a monument are here. Myself, Mr. Taylor with the National Rad Lab Club, Ms. Perkins, co-executive director of the Florida Civil Rights Museum. I'd also like to acknowledge Jerome Jones, chairman of the Board of Directors for Tallahassee Urban League, Bob Holiday, Tallahassee Historical Society President, and other FAMU alum who thought it not robbery to contribute their personal funds to ensure that her grave will be marked after 68 years. And so on next week, January 24th, which will mark exactly 68 years since her passing, we'll host a ceremony in Oakland on the McComb Street side of the cemetery at 9:00 a.m. That'll be a 20-minute brief ceremony. And then at 10:00 a.m., we'll gather at Eugenia Street and FAMU Way at the site of her former home to dedicate an historical marker to her, which will be the first installment on the Florida Civil Rights Museum's Florida Education, Florida Civil Rights and Education Heritage Trail. And we certainly invite all of you to both of those ceremonies. Thank you so much for this recognition for this great lady. And even though the designation goes from Althea Gibson to St. Marks, I'm hopeful that we can place one of the signs in front of Bond School right before you turn into the school on Campbell Street so that those kids will be able every day to see that name. And so they'll do their Google searches and they'll know who this great lady was. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
No further speakers, Mayor.
All right. It's up and up for discussion and for motions.
Move option one is presented as recommended by staff.
Second. Okay, it's been probably moved by Commissioner Richardson. Any objection to a unanimous second? Seeing none. Commissioner Matlow, did you lean forward for some comments?
Oh, well, I was going to make the motion, but yeah, I wanted to thank Mr. Hollinger for bringing this forward. I think we learned so much from you and all the other members of the community that bring these back to light. And I think it's just so important that we don't forget where we came from. We don't forget the history, particularly here in our community. So thank you.
Excellent. Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir.
I just wanted to suggest that we have the residents on that portion of Campbell, I'm sorry, Campbell Street notified that this is not a street naming change. I had a lady at church the other day. I was at a funeral and she came up to me at the funeral and said, Commissioner, I need to talk with you. I understand that our street name is being changed without telling us. So we might just want to, and I explained to her that it was an honorary designation. So we might just want to inform the residents on that street that it is an honorary designation and it doesn't impact their street address in that respect.
We'll do that, yes, sir.
Okay.
All those in favor of the motion on table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, 5-0. Do we have any other business to come before the City Commission at this time?
No, sir.
We are on unengaged speakers. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. We have several speakers. I believe we have three, it might be four. Our first speaker is Douglas Han. And then Ernie Payne will be our second speaker.
Your name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
My name is Douglas Han. I live at 2072 Florida Avenue here in Tallahassee. Happy New Year, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners and Staff. New year and it's a time for reflection of what we've done in the past and what we can do better in the future. I work with several citizen groups in this city that are interested in gun violence mitigation. In 2022, a group came here in front of the City Commission and asked for $5 million over five years to work on the problem. 2022 was a turnaround year on the problem of gun violence. We peaked out. I won't go through all the numbers, but again, over five years prior to that, the numbers climbed even going down. I want to thank the Tallahassee Police Department and Leon County Sheriff's Department for their efforts in this. But we need to look at what we've done and see what we can do better. The money that was allocated over the last five years was wishful thinking. The group to Tallahassee, or I'm sorry, the Capillary Justice Ministry asked for the money to be spent on an evidence-based comprehensive plan. Instead, the money was dispersed among many groups, no coordination, a lot of wishful thinking. My ask is that in the future, during the budget workshops, that when people come to you and ask for the money that was been promised that you asked for, first of all, if the renewing evidence of what they've done has had an impact on the gun violence problems that we have. Second, if new groups come to provide objective evidence that the programs that they are proposing are going to be effective. To be briefly, again, I do have an ask and that was the ask is accountability, transparency. Let us know where the money is going. It's very difficult information to get a hold of. But I will come back at the budget workshop. I will take the numbers that are publicly available. The 26 individuals who were killed in 2026. The 48 people that were injured in gun violence and the 63 gun evidences. And I will provide you with dollar costs on what is costing this government, what is covering businesses and what is covering individual families. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Ernie Payne, followed by Harry Brown.
Name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Ernie Payne, 2006 East Indian Head Drive. After witnessing the annual retreat this morning, I felt the need to come and express my dissatisfaction with the format of the meeting. There was no option to speak publicly at that time, so I'm here before you now. Mr. Mayor, you said at one point that you traditionally don't allow public speakers at the annual meeting. But looking back over previous agendas for previous years, prior to 2023, you did allow public speakers. I remember I myself spoke in 2019 and I even left the meeting feeling like I had been heard and I may have had some effect on what happened in the future. But more important than the public speakers at the annual retreats, it's much more important for the public to hear their elected public officials discuss the work of government for the city. They need to see you come to general consensus. The meeting needs to be a full day of such open discussion, free-willing discussion. We all know that the sunshine law prohibits you having these kinds of discussions and anything other than a public meeting. So this is the perfect opportunity. You've also recently drastically reduced the number of commission meetings where people can see their public in action. All of these lead more and more to the public feeling like they're more in the dark about what's happening. We don't need public fancy, public advertising brochures or pep rallies for the city. We need to see government in action. Something more than 30 minutes at the end of a meeting for the Commissioners to have a public discussion. Public is feeling more and more in the dark about what's happening in their government. This needs to be turned around. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Harry Brown. Mayor, this is the last speaker that I've got a form for at this time.
Okay. Name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Harry Brown, 5431 Crunk Road, Tallahassee. I'm here to speak the truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God. And I come here back and forth because I want everyone to know the way I was treated for my more than 19 years here in this city government. I went through some evil stuff here. And I know other employees went through stuff too that they should not have. But Lou Shelley, at the time, stated that he had seen no other employee treated the way I was treated. And at the very end, I was run out of City Hall with a gun at my back. But your illustrious Jim Cook asked me, Harry, did you see a gun in the officer's fanny pack? You think I could have seen a gun? Why you ask such dumb questions? You claim you have amended the city charter to help employees as a whistleblower. No employee will respond as a whistleblower because if they do, they will feel that they will be immediately fired. This city government cannot be trusted to manage the city's fund. Police station building has gone from an estimated $40 million to now $120 million. Why such a humongous increase? And you never answer questions when this is asked. Daily, when we see you and your two allies operating the way you three operate, we don't feel that you can be trusted. We have seen over the years how you and Reese Gold operate when we know that you cannot be trusted to do the right thing. Especially when we saw that you all were going to bring in a black police chief at $175,000, but you brought in a white police chief at $225,000. Can you see any right in that? And your two allies that sit there beside you go back and forth from Pro Tem Chairman, they never say anything, just let you do what you want to do. There are no normal moral principles in your DNA. We need to see some integrity coming from this.
You have 30 seconds.
Previous leaders in this government have managed this government in the manner that you all are running it now. The city manager Anita Favors and her helper Sharon O'Farrell did some dirty things against me for many years. And I told you Tom Coe ran me out of City Hall with a gun at my back. And as he was telling the unarmed, the armed policeman.
Thank you very much.
Three minutes.
I saw him grinning as he did. I saw him grinning as he did.
Our next speaker, please.
Yeah, I see.
Mayor, that's the last.
You run me out of here, but you just had a speaker speaking before me that went almost a minute.
Well, that was Coach Hubbard and we were honoring him and I think that was very worthy to give Coach Hubbard as much time as he would like. We are now on City Commission sharing of ideas. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to share some information about the activities that are going to be taking place this week, sponsored by the City of Tallahassee, to celebrate another great American, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And I've asked the city manager to ask staffer, I see the wonderful Ashley Edwards coming forward, to share with our public the different activities that will be taking place this weekend, sponsored by the City of Tallahassee. Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you, Commissioner. We've got a great lineup. Angela Hendrith and her team, our Diversity and Inclusion Office have worked really hard. We're happy to partner with them and help with some of the festivities. The events kick off on Sunday evening on January 19th with the inaugural Distinguished Black Classical Excellence Awards and Concerts. It's a free community event that will take place at 6 o'clock, I'm sorry, from 3 to 6 at the AC Hotel on South Gadsden Street. It's hosted by the Jaffa Kia Arts Conservancy and sponsored by the City of Tallahassee. And the event will celebrate the contributions of Black classical musicians and educators and honor and promote diversity within classical music. Then on that Monday, the festivities kickoff at 9:00 a.m. with the annual NAACP March from the CK Steel Plaza. This year, they're going to march to the courthouse, Leon County Courthouse, because of the construction that's underway at the Capitol. That'll be from 9:00 to noon. The parade steps off at noon. It'll be on Monroe Street, starting at Call Street. Will run down to Appalachian Parkway. I'm excited to say we have 62 entries in the parade this year. That's a pretty significant increase from last year. We're very excited about that. The parade will run, like I said, until about 1:30 down, down Monroe Street to Call, from Call to Appalachian Parkway. And we encourage everybody, just come on down, keep coming on down Appalachian Parkway and come right on over to Cascades Park where the Martin Luther King Day Festival will take place. We've got 10 food vendors, 51 other types of vendors and everything from arts and crafts, clothing, exhibitors. We'll have a kids zone, live music entertainment that is going to be capped off from 4 to 6 o'clock at the Adley Amphitheater with our very own wonderful Tallahassee Nights Live in concert. And during that afternoon is the annual Day of Dialogue. That happens in the Parkview from 2:30 to 4:30. And it's a discussion on exploring art as activism that will be led by Ted Ellis, the Director of the Civil Rights Institute at Florida State University. It's going to be an exciting day. Might be a little chilly. Bring your coat, wear your coat. But there's no rain in the forecast anymore. It's going to be a great day for everybody. Lots of hard work has gone into this. We're super excited about it and look forward to everyone coming out and joining us. Happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Ashley. I heard one time it was going to snow. So I'm glad to hear it's not going to snow.
No, ma'am, not this year.
No snow.
Okay. And I know that there are, there are many other community activities that are taking place. FAMU and FSU are having activities. As a matter of fact, I don't see him in chambers. He must be somewhere rehearsing, but our own Darryl Jones is going to be the speaker for the Martin Luther King Day Convocation at Florida A&amp;M on Friday morning at 10:10. And I know the Urban League also has a neighborhood cleanup that's taking place on, on Monday afternoon as, as well. I'd also like to announce a program that we'd like for you to, to support, Unity in the Tallahassee Community, which is a gospel brunch that's being sponsored by Godby High School. The, the women's basketball coach, Ms., I always want to call about her, Chelsea Johnson, but she has a merit name. How do you say her merit name? Muir. She is sponsoring this event, helping to sponsor this event, and I too am supporting it. It's called, and she's saying breaking bread and building bridges. It's a time to come together for inspiring fellowship, faith, and a powerful message of unity and peace as we celebrate the enduring legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King. As you know, his, his goal was for us to be a part of the beloved community. And so this is pushing forward with that. And so I just wanted to make those announcements and encourage everyone to not treat Monday as a day off, but as a day on. And Dr. King said that everybody can be great because everybody can serve. So I hope that you find your area of service, even if these activities don't fit into what you're doing, and let's honor this, this great American. I know too, and it goes without saying, our history is our history. Monday is also inauguration day for our 47th president. And we, we have to honor the institution of our government. And so we are going to have a new president and may God be with all of us as he, we've asked him to be with all of us and with past presidents. This too will be just fine. We just need to keep doing what we're doing in our community and keep, keep working hard and just not get caught up in, in anything that we shouldn't get caught up in because your local is going to touch you before you're national. So let's, let's keep, let's keep local, local and do what we need to do to keep moving our, our city forward. And Mr. Mayor, I, I think that's it. I think that's all I promised people I would share.
Excellent.
Oh, one, one more thing. I'm sorry. And this goes back to the, the naming of, of the streets. I, I missed a note that for, for Dr. Carolyn Rawls, instead of Lane, I think the request was for that to be Way as well. So Mr. City Manager, I don't know what the process is for that since we've already voted for it. But you know, three letters instead of four.
Mr. Mayor, if we could, we can certainly accommodate that. I think we probably need you guys to vote again on that, just to.
I missed it.
Because I believe it was a resolution that you were adopting. If you can just, just amend that.
Okay.
We could certainly accommodate it.
Madam Attorney, do we need to take a vote for reconsideration? Is that the appropriate?
Yes, you should do a motion for reconsideration. Since it was unanimous, anyone can make that motion.
The Mayor Pro Tem has made a motion for reconsideration. I will second it. Any comment? None. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. The Mayor Pro Tem makes a motion in favor of Dr. Carolyn Rawls Way. I'll second. Well, we'll do the unanimous second without objection. For the comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, passes unanimously. Are we in the proper posture?
Yes, we'll have to, yes.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Sure. Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one announcement as well. Wanted to announce for those who might not already know that Florida Civil Rights Museum, represented so ably by Mr. Delatory Hollinger, Ms. Jackie Jacqueline Perkins, will be having their gala on Thursday, January 16th, this week. Six, 7:00 p.m., starts at 7:00 p.m. at the Student Union, I guess Ballroom is it called, at Tallahassee State College. And yours truly will be one of their honorees and thank you all for that recognition as well. And so I just encourage everyone to be there. I think we're expecting a pretty good turnout, a large turnout in support of the Civil Rights Museum and those who have contributed to the cause of civil rights in communities throughout our cit, in our city and certainly our state. That's all that I had, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Malo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I just wanted to take a moment to honor and remember President Jimmy Carter, who passed away at 100 years old. There's a great memorial service for him at Lake Ella last week and multiple accomplishments, living to 100, probably the, the largest. Secondly, I wanted to ask, Mr. Commander, is there a, much like the, the sidewalk priority list, is there a street resurfacing repavement priority list that can be referenced of when different areas will be resurfaced?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, if I may ask Mr. Schaefer to come forward. We have a master planning process. You recall several years ago, we put in place a new method of, or a new approach, the, the resurfacing differs dependent upon need of street. And I'm not sure if that delineates the ranking. Steve, if you can share with us how we determine that.
Yeah, we've, we've got a planning process where, actually, we've got a, a program that identifies recommended streets in a certain order. And then we take that and coordinate that with our resurfacing needs, or I'm sorry, our utility upgrade needs. So basically what we have is a, a list of projects that we expect to get done this year. We have additional ones that we'll be looking at to see if we can get them ready utility-wise for next year, but not beyond that.
Okay. So, for example, so Bruno, right adjacent to, to our building, coming in, you know, those types of roads that are, are not neighborhood based, are those already prioritized to where the end date would be predicted? And then the second side of that is if you are in a neighborhood road, that's not necessarily a commuter road in certain neighborhoods, are those prioritized separately from traffic? Are they, are they on the same list? Do they have to wait for the high priority roads or is there a separate kind of structure for neighborhoods?
It, it's a bit of a complicated process. We don't do it based on prioritizing residence or a collector or arterial first. The program actually looks to see what the need is, what type of treatment it needs, and how long before we will need the next most expensive treatment. So it's kind of a cost deferral. We want to get the ones before they go to the next, the, the higher level of an expense of a treatment. So it, it looks at those things more so than whether it's residential or, or commercial or, I'm sorry.
And so in it, if a neighborhood had a request on a certain road, is there any way to give them a timeframe or is it just?
Ask me that again, I'm sorry.
If a specific neighborhood had a specific road, is there a way to give them a timeframe on resurfacing?
Best thing they could do is contact my office and we can take a look at it and see where it is on the, whether or not it's been even identified as something in the next three to five years and, and go from there.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Porter.
Nothing for me.
I just want to take a second and welcome everybody back and I appreciate your comments regarding President Carter. He was a fine man, a fine president, leader in his Methodist church and a scout leader as well. I also want to take a second to recognize a former governor Buddy McKay, who also has passed away. And we have had many great statesmen that have served, the Bob Grahams, the Lawton Childs, and Buddy McKay, and Ruben Askew. They, they were all cut from the same cloth as wonderful leaders as well. I thought we have had a wonderful strategic planning workshop today and I appreciate all the staff. We did have tremendous robust discussion, starting at 9:00 in the morning and lasting all day. And of course, this is just one stop of the discussions. But nevertheless, it has been a great day. It really has.
We are in recess until 6:00 for the public hearing, ladies and gentlemen. Hearing in order, it is 6:01 on Wednesday, January 15th. We have one item, 16.01. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 16.01 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 24-0-40, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida repealing the Citizens Police Review Board, Division Four, Sections 2-253 through 2-258 in Article Six of Chapter Two in the Code of General Ordinances, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. The recommended action is Option One, conduct the first and only hearing and adopt ordinance number 24-0-40.
Excellent. All right. Mr. Sutton, good evening. Want to provide some comment as well?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Yes, as you know from when we introduced this ordinance last time, in the 2024 Florida Legislature, they passed HB, HB 601, which preempted local governments from having citizen police review boards. The city attorney and I, and myself, the city attorney and I have followed this closely from when it was introduced as a bill, all the way through its signing by the governor and afterwards. We, we looked at how other municipalities were handling this and have noted that since the passage and signing of the bill, several municipalities have repealed their boards based on their attorney's interpretation of the law's applicability. Specifically Fort Myers, Kissimmee, Miami, Orlando, and Tampa have all already reviewed, repealed their boards. And other cities have made their boards inactive, but not yet repealed their ordinances. That would be Bradenton, Fort Lauderdale, Fort Pierce, North Miami Beach, St. Petersburg, and Winter Haven. And so tonight, we think it's best for us to go ahead and repeal the ordinance that brought the Citizen Police Review Board into place because it will eliminate some of the confusion that we have this on the books, but we're not enforcing it, we're not utilizing it. So it's better to go ahead and repeal it, get it off the books and remove that confusion that there's something in ordinance that's no longer being applied. So, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, let's go straight into a public comment. Mr. Cook, how many speakers do we have?
Thank you, Mayor. Got half dozen, maybe seven at this point.
Okay.
The first, the first speaker we have is Adam Flannery. Adam Flannery and then Madeline Bowman.
Okay.
Speakers will each have three minutes for remarks and I'll give a heads up at 30 seconds remaining as the light in front of the mayor will turn from green to yellow at that point as well.
Good evening. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Adam Flannery and I live in 32305 in Tallahassee. I'm speaking in opposition to repeal the CPRB ordinance and in favor of reinstating the CPRB. There is nothing in HB, HB 601 that prohibits boards like the CPRB from conducting any of the activities that it did when it was active or that it was designed to do. That fact has been established and supported by numerous independent legal institutions. The CPRB provided an essential role and accountability of our public employees to the city's residents and I would encourage the Commission to retain the ordinance.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Madeline Bowman is next and then Thomas Spears.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Madeline Bowman. I live at 622 West 10th Avenue in Lee Park. Good, good evening. As I said, I'm Madeline Bowman. I do work for the ECLU as my day job. I'm a field organizer. But I'm speaking in my personal capacity as a concerned citizen tonight. I'm speaking today because I believe it would be a grave mistake to dissolve the Citizens Police Review Board here in Tallahassee. Citizen review boards play a really important role in building trust between police departments and community members. We know that Black and Brown communities have been historically overpoliced, overincarcerated, and are subjected to discrimination and police violence more than their white counterparts. These review boards are necessary and it's a tool that we can use to make the process more fair and more transparent for the community. To reduce these racial disparities in policing, we first need to acknowledge that first, these disparities exist. That's why our Citizen Review Board is limited in scope and it functions to increase that trust and accountability through the review of completed cases and reports. While the review board can make those policy recommendations, it does not engage in oversight, which would be the issue of the police department, and it does not have any authority over police investigations, which would also be an issue with HB 601. So the duties of the ordinance to review these completed department internal affair reports and to make recommendations to the Chief, Chief of Police and the City Manager sound like very minimal and I think reasonable transparency measures that do not run afoul of any Florida statutes. Due to these reasons, HB 601 should not have any impact on Tallahassee's Citizens Police Review Board. And I think we have seen in Florida a rise in these anti-democratic legislation aimed to suppress free speech and to limit citizens autonomy. I think now more than ever, our community needs transparency. We need open dialogue and the sharing of ideas. And I hope you see the value in your constituents' input in improving community trust. Disbanding the CPRB would send a message to our community that law enforcement either has something to hide or that it does not value the input of our constituents. If you believe that changes or adjustments need to be made to the review board, I think we can do that by addressing it as a community together. I really implore the City Commission tonight to defend our democratic values here in Tallahassee and I urge you to not disband the.
You have 30 seconds.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Thomas Spears and then Delilah Pierre.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Thomas Spears and my address is exempt. I watched some of the retreat this morning and this afternoon and I, I saw when Commissioner Williams Cox said that there is no, no 3-2 split on the Commission. That's going to make tonight's vote. there is no 3-2 split on the commission. That's going to make tonight's vote pretty weird. Actually, not weird at all, entirely predictable. We all know that the conservative majority on this commission is ready to disband the CPRB. I mean, the mayor has already explicitly said so in the previous meeting. And we also know that despite what Commissioners Richardson and Williams-Cox may have said in the past, their actions prove that the CPRB goes against what they actually believe and what they actually stand for. The implementation of the CPRB was not a demand of the commission or of the conservative majority. It was a demand of the people of Tallahassee. The people of Tallahassee came out to this building for weeks, if not months, and demanded the board. They made the board happen. Of course, and as always, the conservative majority are going to cower behind state preemption laws and legality to get out of supporting the board. Let me get ahead of you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, Miami's civilian investigative panel sued the City of Miami-Dade to say in effect the lawsuit was not successful, the board was found to be illegal and was disbanded, and the lawsuit cost the city quite a bit of money, at least over a million dollars, something along those lines. At least the CIP fought. At least they tried to do something. Instead of fighting, the conservative majority is just going to bend the knee to the agenda of the GOP majority in this state and the agenda of Ron DeSantis. What will the conservative majority do if Donald Trump actually goes through with these insane plans to mass deport illegal immigrants? What is the conservative majority going to do if almost certainly there are going to be incredibly transphobic bills coming through the halls across the street? This could be a sanctuary city. That could have been done at any time. TCAC does not cower from reactionary racist laws or people. TCAC stands Against Trump, Against DeSantis, and Against the Republican Agenda. We will be rallying at the Capitol on inauguration day at 6:00 PM. And anyone out there who may be listening that wants to come out against those things, please come out and support. I remember when George Floyd was killed, the police report came out from the Minneapolis Police Department and said that he died of a medical incident. I don't know what kind of medical incident. It's a knee to the back of the neck for nine and a half minutes. Chief Revel has said that TPD can police themselves pretty well. Did MPD police themselves pretty well in that moment? I don't think so. And that's exactly why CPRBs are required. That's why the CIP in Miami fought to keep it, because they know it's the right thing. That was formed in 2001. And now because of these racist reactionaries that are in power now in this state, that's gone. And they fought a lot of battles and won a lot of good battles. And that's why these things need to be in existence. Please just don't get rid of it. Try to fight back, please. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Delilah Pierre, and then next is Justin. I'm going to trust the last name will be announced to me in a minute.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name's Delilah Pierre. I'm the president of the Tallahassee Community Action Committee. My address is exempt. So I could talk about the legality of the existence of the Citizens Police Review Board, but I think the incredible speech by Madeline Bowman and the ACLU pretty much talks about the legality. So let's talk about what this really is. It's a political choice of our city commission to abandon civilian oversight, to abandon Black and Brown people in our community, and to abandon fighting for police accountability. That's what this is. This is not about what the law is. It's about a political choice that Mayor John Daley, City Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox, City Commissioner Richard Curtison, and City Manager Reese Goode are making. That is what this is about. And we know that's a fact, because we had city commissioners, like City Commissioner Jack Porter, propose to have this meeting in February, to give time for the community to come out, congregate, and really discuss this issue. But that amendment was put down. 3-2 vote. We could have had more time to discuss this. We could have more time to fight over this, to have a real conversation or struggle over this, but I don't feel like the city really wants to. But I want you all to understand that whether or not the Citizens Police Review Board exists, police accountability and civilian oversight will come. Because it isn't just about being able to review the police's laws. It's about civilians having the power to make sure things like the death of Tony McDade doesn't happen again. Tony McDade did not have to die. It was a choice of the Tallahassee Police Department. To ignore him when he was struggling and calling out for mental health, when they were calling the police for mental health, the same thing you can say about Michael Johnson, who had called the Tallahassee Police Department and asked for support, and was given none, but then was murdered. Our Chief of Police Lawrence Revel has gotten away with so much from employing a war criminal, from speaking at an anti-LGBTQ conference with his TPD police shirt on, and we watch as the conservative majority of our city commission stands by and does nothing about it. They do nothing about it. They did nothing about Jack was Kirkland and the beating he took. They did nothing about Calvin Riley and the evidence that was planted on him. And at a certain point, I have to ask myself, is this just because you're unable to, or is this a choice you're making actively? Because in reality, you care more about your own careers, about not angering the Fraternal Order of Police, about standing with the people who will give you money and resources than you care about the community.
You're at 30 seconds.
That's what I've come to believe from my political experience, from my organizing. And also, that's what I think the people will one day come to believe. Because, trust me, you don't have a choice over whether police accountability exists in the end. It's the people who have the final choice over that. Just four years ago, we saw massive protest over George Floyd. You think that won't happen again? Get ready, because there will be a reaction. And in the end, we will have police accountability and civilian oversight. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Justin, maybe Joan, and followed by Dot Enman Johnson.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Justin Jordan, address exempt. And I recently had the pleasure of speaking to several victims of police crimes. Each of their stories are so very important. A mother who lost her son because of a mistake he made as a teenager. A woman wrongfully imprisoned due to a no-knock warrant. A mother who lost her daughter in a horrible and brutal way due to police violence. The police are supposed to serve their communities, not butcher them. Why remove this critical element of accountability to their communities? Why bow down to a governor who repeatedly shows an uncaring attitude towards violence committed by police officers? The people want accountability. The people don't want to worry about police coming into their house at night. The people want to know that their community is safe. What are we going to tell the victims of police crimes, the families of the victims of police crimes, as we bow down to this governor and just remove this board? That we couldn't do enough? That the governor told us so, so we have to? That we just can't fight the governor? We're just a city government? The spirit of fighting, the spirit of resistance exists in Tallahassee. And in my 19 years on this planet, I have seen far too many Brown and Black people die due to the hands of police violence. I've always been told to be extremely careful around the police. And now, sometimes I feel fear around police due to the things that have happened in my community, due to the things that I've seen committed against people who look like me for the crime of existing. And yet, today, this board seems poised to remove a board, which is so critical to the community, even though the board, some may claim it may not have teeth, the board is at least something for the community to look towards. Something, a small sliver of hope in this broken criminal justice system that maybe, maybe, just maybe, there will be justice. So I implore all of you, please consider the community as you vote today. Please consider the lives of so many impacted by police violence. Please consider me, a college student, concerned about the future of this country, concerned about the future of this city. Thank you all so much.
Next speaker, please.
Dot Enman Johnson, and then next will be Aiden.
Name and address for the record, please.
Dot Enman Johnson, 2121 Trescott Drive. I am speaking against eliminating the Citizens Police Review Board. And the fact that even though the citizens voted to give the Inspector General additional power, the fact that one of the first things brought forward is the elimination of public input into what happens, and accountability into what happens within the police department, is concerning to me. Because all of this is internal, and something I wasn't planning to do, but I will do tonight. And I was happy the previous speaker mentioned accountability. A group will be forming called Citizens for Government Accountability to hold local governments' feet to the fire. And I say that because I wish the Inspector General had mentioned something as an alternative if he was recommending ending that board, that would give the community some angle for collective input into what's happening. It could improve relations between the police and the community. And while I'm here, one of the things I was concerned about, about accountability, is the vote that was taken on December 11th to take away all the rights of the veldedary neighborhood for their residential protection and give opportunities for scraping away that green space buffer to that neighborhood that had been promised to them for decades. That zoning
Excuse me. We're not on the zoning tonight. This item is on the police review board that you were discussing earlier.
Can I reclaim my time? It's about my concern about
Finish your statement. Sure.
The Inspector General.
He had no role in the zoning either.
And that vote, because it was taken, and the developer had put in thousands of dollars into Commissioner Richardson's campaign, he should have recused himself. And at the least, he committed an ethics violation. At the worst
Wait, we are not on the zoning.
He may have committed the crime
Thank you very much. I'm going to wrap up your comments. Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please. I'm going to ask everybody, we are on the police review board, and that is the issue that we're seeking input on. So let's stick to the topic at hand.
Aiden is our next speaker, and then Catherine Kurzweil. And I'm going to say, Mayor, those are the only other two speakers I have. There may be others in the lobby, so I'm saying that out loud in case there are the others that need to be brought in.
Okay. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Aiden. My address is exempt. I'm here today speaking as a member of the Tallahassee Community Action Committee. On September 23rd, 2020, the city commission and this mayor added item 1503 to the agenda. The agenda stated, quote, "It has been widely viewed that citizen participation in governmental policymaking produces many benefits, including the promotion of trust in governmental operations." The final report of the President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing, published in 2015, emphasized the importance of citizen involvement in policing as a strategy to improve trust between law enforcement and the public. After a brief public comment, the mayor pro temp at the time, Diane Williams-Cox, motioned to approve this item. It was seconded by Curtis Richardson, and the vote was unanimous. I watched all of this on Zoom earlier today. If they would like to lie to themselves and say they genuinely believed this at the time, then my only question would be, what changed? Was it the endorsement of the Police Benevolent Association at a time when Diane Williams-Cox, your campaign was floundering? Whatever the case may be, the record of your time in Tallahassee, Commissioners, will be marked by your failures here today if you do not keep the CPRB. In fact, don't take my word for it. Take Curtis Richardson's.
... policies and give the police department and the city commission honest and trustworthy advice on how we can change those policies or even include policies that will make the police department more citizen and community friendly.
Thank you. I see the rest of my time.
Our next speaker, please.
Catherine Kurzweil.
Name and address for the record, please.
Catherine Kurzweil, address is exempt. If you care about the citizens of Tallahassee, you will not repeal the Citizens Police Review Board. Police officers need to be held accountable for their actions. We all know that crooked cops exist. We all know that violent cops are a real threat to this community. How can you, the city commissioners, just turn a blind eye to your community and say, no, we don't need any police oversight. We trust all of our police. Tallahassee is no stranger to police misconduct. Our very own Chief of Police Lawrence Revel is a killer cop. He killed George Williams when he was only 19 years old. We will not stand by as devious cops are roaming around with no repercussions. That is not justice. The point of a Citizens Police Review Board is to keep cops in check and make sure that the city of Tallahassee is as safe as possible. Civilian oversight makes sure the people of Tallahassee have a role in how they are policed. This is necessary to prevent the tragic deaths like Rahim Reader, Tony McDade, Wilbin Wardred, and Michael Johnson from repeating themselves. Recently, the budget for the police headquarters ballooned to 135 million. There are so many other, much more helpful things that our city could do with that money. We could invest more in our roads and public transportation, and we could fund social programs. We need more funding for this community, not for a bigger police station. 30 acres of land will now be taken up by a new police headquarters right on North Monroe Street, just across the street from a middle school. Now, all of these students' work environment will be interrupted with the disturbance of construction for over a year or more, not to mention the negative ramifications of having a police presence so close to young students. It's no secret to any of us that increased police presence enforces the school-to-prison pipeline. This is what you are allowing by raising the police budget. This obscene amount of money isn't making the people of Tallahassee safer. It's putting us in harm's way. In 2020, when the CPRB was created, there was no question of whether or not police oversight was necessary. So what has changed? Why has it become acceptable to become detached and apathetic to our own community? You city commissioners need to do better. We need police accountability now. We need to protect civilian oversight now. The consequences of not having it are too much for our city to bear. I yield my time.
Next speaker, please.
I have no additional speakers, Mayor.
All right. So open it up for discussion.
I make the motion that we accept option two, disband the CRPD.
Strike him.
Sister Police Review Board.
You say option one?
I need to read. Let me read it exactly.
Option one.
Option one.
Option one, conduct the public hearing and adopt ordinance number 24-0-40.
Yes.
And there's a second by Commissioner Richardson. Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start by saying, I think the value of a Citizens Police Review Board is to the city and not just, the city as a government entity, and not just the people that we serve. In the best light, we're working hand in hand to get ahead of issues, address them quickly, and set policies that limit the types of things we've seen in other communities that build distrust. Ultimately, that is the goal. I think that is a noble goal, and I think it's necessary and effective for good communities. So this issue with the state legislature and the preemption is interesting to me on a couple different levels. I think if you take the arguments that, I think we all received a memo from the ACLU arguing that the state law doesn't explicitly require the disbanding of our board. I know we have legal guidance. Madam Attorney, well, if we look at legislative intent and what these legislators are actually saying, it does, or it may. And I think, you know, I think those are both valid opinions. But when we look at the intent of the legislature, it may well be their intent was to target Tallahassee, but also with a misunderstanding of what our board is actually doing. Because in truth, our board did not have oversight. Our board reviewed publicly available information, closed investigations, and publicly available city policies, and made recommendations. I don't believe that was explicitly targeted in the bill text, that type of activity. I do think there are people in the legislature who would like it to have targeted that text. I do think there's people in the legislature who will bring it back to target those types of boards if it's not overturned. But the difference I see from Miami is the Citizens Board But the difference I see from Miami is the citizens' board sued the city because they had a power that our board never had. Our board didn't have an option to continue to meet because they were an arm of the city. We saw this in the Taylor Bureau lawsuit about the cup. You know, her speech was trumped by the fact that, you know, she was serving at the pleasure of the city to express speech on our behalf as a government. So I say that to say, I think both can be true. This legislation didn't target, didn't explicitly say what we are doing is prohibited. I think it can also be true that it was the intent to abolish the board in Tallahassee. In the bill analysis by the state, it specifically talks about boards created to provide external oversight. I think it's been well established that our board was never external oversight. It was internal oversight, appointed by city commissioners to review publicly information available to the public. So it's not an external entity in any shape or form. So where I'm challenged on here is more not the intent, what the law says, and who's right or wrong if the state is asking us to be abolic. I'm looking at our board, which has two functions. One, to review closed investigations, not an investigation, not initiate an investigation, not conduct an investigation, but review the material findings of IA of closed investigations that become public record. And to read those publicly available policies and make recommendations. And to me, it boils down to the only function of the CPRB is an opinion, it's speech. And if we're saying that this legislation specifically targets our board, the only thing it can be targeting is the speech and the opinion, because it never had any authority to make any decision. And I think that is such a dangerous road, and I question, even constitutional, if a state government can say a city government can't even have a subset that has an opinion about what it's doing. And, you know, I hate that this has been devolved into some sort of community versus law enforcement, and do you support law enforcement and do you don't type of conversation, because the whole point was to work together more collaboratively. You know, if people didn't want to expect the best from their government, and frankly, if we didn't want the best from our citizens, we don't want to see people get, felt like their backs are pushed up against the wall that we see right in the streets when something bad happens. We want to know that we have a responsible way to make sure, look, wrongdoing happens, it will happen everywhere. We can't 100% say wrongdoing will never happen, but how we respond to that is what matters. So, you know, ultimately, while I agree with both arguments on the state legislation, I'm not sure what the target was. And, you know, I can't personally support an item where I think the sole intent of the state legislation is to silence the voices of the public, because that's materially the only thing that this does. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comment? Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand that there... Well, first, I want to say that I agree with what Commissioner Matlow just said, and I think he put it really well. I mean, I believe in accountability across the board, and I also believe in the opportunity for consistent and formal community input over all aspects of government, and law enforcement should be no exception. And I know that there has been disagreement and confusion about how to interpret the state statute. And part of the complexity is that each city's board is structured differently with different powers and authorities. And a difference between... And I read the ACLU's memo, and one distinction between... And I spoke to, I've spoken to our inspector general, I've spoken to our city attorney. One thing that we have pointed to is this case that was brought up by a speaker in Miami and their civilian investigative panel, I believe is what it was called, and which the courts did find violated state statute. But that board is completely different from ours. There are pretty different factual circumstances. They did have oversight. They had staff. They had much broader functions to actually conduct investigations, independent investigations, whereas our board reviewed closed cases, basically, that had already gone through internal affairs. So I do think that there is room for our board to continue to provide that input. They, I mean, and we all know this, that we don't have, that it didn't have oversight, because that was something that we, that came up all the time and was a source of conflict within the board itself and the members who served on the board. So I remember how much of a sticking point that was, and I do believe that with as much strength as we can muster to fight against preemption, to fight against the interference of our local democracy and the voices of our residents, I do think that we don't have to do this today. And so I would like to make a substitute motion for option 2, that we do not adopt ordinance number 24-040.
Substitute motion for option number 2 has been made by Commissioner Porter. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Matlow. Okay. Madam Attorney, you've mentioned you wanted to weigh in.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to clarify the opinion that came out of the Miami case. I have the opinion in front of me, so I just want to read a little bit of the language. The court, and of course, this is just one opinion, this is, but it is the only opinion we have interpreting this law at this time. The court identifies the role of the CIP and includes four things that they're authorized to do. One is to review police department policies and practices, and another is to make written requests and recommendations regarding the reviews and investigations to the city manager and the police chief. And the court in that case said all of these functions, including those last two, are, quote, "relating to the investigation of police misconduct or civilian oversight into police misconduct." And the court says these subjects are preempted by the legislative act. The court goes on to say that the only permissible board is the one that is mentioned in the statute and described and defined by the statute. So I just wanted to clarify what that opinion actually says, acknowledging that the CIP was very different from Tallahassee's board, but I just thought it was important to let you know what that opinion actually says. Excellent.
Okay. There's a substitute motion on the table made by Commissioner Porter, seconded by Commissioner Matlow for option number 2. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
And the motion fails 3 to 2 with the mayor, Mayor Pro Temp, and Commissioner Richardson in dissent. We are back on the original motion. Motion made by the Mayor Pro Temp, seconded by Commissioner Richardson for option number 1. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
And the motion passes 3 to 2 with Commissioner Matlow and Commissioner Porter in dissent. Do we have any other items to come before us at the public hearing?
No, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned.